All right, calling our special meeting of July 7, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Here.
All right, Councilmember House, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with the keeping justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Solis, our mission statement, please.
Honored to do so, Mr. Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, would you mind giving our land acknowledgement, please?
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Brings us to agenda item four, JWP Extension, Phase One and Two Proposed Alignments. And welcome our staff for presentation. I will note, as we set this up, we are a bit on a time crunch today, just so you're aware. And so, councilmembers, if we can keep our questions, commentary concise, that'll help us be able to hear the public's concerns, what they would like to see, and ensure we have an efficient meeting that gets all voices heard. So, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, David Peterson, capital improvement project manager. Tonight, we're going to continue the conversation on the John Wesley Powell Extension, answering some of the questions that were presented last week in the discussion with the public and with council. Again, this is just a context map of the area that we're talking about where the road would service, and the green circle is approximately that 2,200-acre area just south of Butler and just east of the current terminus of John Wesley Powell. Tonight's presentation, or this afternoon's presentation, is a little longer than last, so we have a little more of an agenda to go through here. Apologize for the length, but I think it's going to do a really good job of answering the questions that were presented last week. We're going to spend a little bit of time talking about crossings, grade-separated crossings, wildlife crossings, alignments, either alignment and what crossings are necessary on the original alignment versus the alternative alignment. We're going to talk a little bit about wildlife, open space, the green and the blue alignments that were shown briefly last week, kind of elaborate a little bit more on those, cost comparison, go into engineering standards briefly, I promise, on minor arterial specifications, and then talk about community outreach, and then a little bit more about the regional map at a larger scale than we showed last week, and then some cross-section examples of current existing John Wesley Powell. So, the three crossings I want to mention here are wildlife crossings, pedestrian or human crossings, and then drainage crossings. So, wildlife crossings in general maintain a natural bottom. They typically have dirt or grass or native vegetation around. They do not have a paved bottom. Depending on the size of those animals, smaller animals require smaller passages, larger animals, ungulates, elk, deer, require a larger opening, as wide as possible is the preference that's said, but usually a minimum of about 12-foot height of vertical clearance. And then there's a preference to avoid combining humans with animals unless your opening is very large, which becomes cost prohibitive in most situations to construct something like that. For people crossings, per our engineering standards, it's a minimum height of nine feet. We try to strive for 10 feet. And then for width, they're typically, it's 14 feet, but for every additional 10-foot increment over 50 feet, we add a foot. So, for example, if you have a 100-foot underpass, it would be 19 feet wide. So, it'd be wider than that 14-foot requirement because it's longer than 50 feet. And then typically, we provide lighting, unlike wildlife underpasses. Wildlife don't like lighting. So, pedestrians, like in Beulah University that's been proposed with sheep crossing, we light those underpasses. And then typically, we try not to combine drainage with humans unless you can vertically offset them or do so in a capacity that doesn't compromise the human use of that tunnel. And then I want to briefly touch on this map here that was created for this afternoon's meeting before I touch on the drainage crossings. So, this map shows the four points A, B, C, and D. That'll be crossings on the original alignment or the alternative alignment. We'll go into these a little further in depth as we go on in the presentation. Also wanted to show that this pink line is the existing Arizona Trail, and the purple line is the proposed, internally proposed, realignment of the Arizona Trail. So, again, we haven't acquired the easements or the rights to that property. We haven't worked with agencies to conclude that this is the final proposed alignment of the Arizona Trail, just what is proposed at this time. This is Hoffman Tank. Hoffman Tank will be referred to a couple times throughout this presentation, but it's just, just east of that B crossing, or west of that B crossing, excuse me. The 100-year floodplain is shown by this blue tonality here, and then the red crosswork here is actually the regulatory floodway, which includes the high velocity or the stream force of the actual channel. And then the foul wag, which is the lowest point of that stream channel, is shown in blue. So, you can see that that's the 100-year floodplain showing across here for the Rio. There is some ancillary drainage for A and B, but it's pretty minimal in the context of what comes down the Rio. And then, again, we're showing the original alignment in yellow and the alternative alignment in salmon throughout the conversation. And then just for reference, what currently services the large, or, excuse me, small parcel property owners, which continue off to the right or the east side of this map, is Harold Ranch Road, which has been added to this exhibit here, coming along here. So, with that said, the drainage crossings for C and D on the Rio are designed for a 100-year event, and then these other crossings on A and B are designed for the 50-year event, which are defined by FEMA. So, some of the crossing examples that we would be looking at for all four of these would be something either concrete or a corrugated metal are usually the two preferences for structures to allow passage underneath a grade roadway. The concrete ones can get really ornate on these wing walls and these head walls. You can stamp the concrete, you can color the concrete, you can do a rock veneer. There's a multitude of options with what you can do to actually face the facade. Obviously, those have costs to do. And down here, you can see this is a kind of a CMU masonry wall to increase the aesthetics. But here, again, we're talking about modification in the design to be able to incorporate wildlife passage as well. So, looking at that 12 feet versus what might be calculated to pass storm drainage, which might be significantly shorter, but would be increased in capacity for wildlife to travel in and out of there. So, a structure like this, and the bottom one, this corrugated metal, might be used in C or D crossings, or potentially, depending on the calculations of design, maybe more than one of those, based on what the flow is and what the final design comes to with wildlife crossings. But again, you can see here wildlife crossing, natural bottom on this one and this one as well. So, they're not paved underneath. It is the natural, local environment that is the floor of those tunnels. And Hannah Griscum has joined us with Arizona Game and Fish in this call, so she's available for questions should wildlife questions come up later. Thank you, Hannah, for joining us. Did our part to summarize this, their wonderful points into one slide here, and I thank Arizona Game and Fish for their partnership, both looking back and looking forward. They will be part of design going forward with either alignment, working with us and trying to incorporate wildlife friendliness and connectivity in corridors into the design. So, as mentioned last week with the small parcel property owners and those that actually live out here, there is abundant elk populations here. So, the caller data that Arizona wildlife tracks shows that there is abundant wildlife out here and abundant elk movement. No big surprise, wildlife seeks water, even if that water source is intermittent. So, that's, again, looking at Hoffman Tank, which has water on occasion, as well as a Rio which more frequently has water, and that connectivity from the Forest Service land to the south of this area, as well as through the small parcel property owners to keep that connectivity to water and access to water. As well as, there is movement towards Fox Glen Park. If you've been towards Fox Glen Park, you can often see the scat trails in the, in the park and the grasslands there, so they commonly migrate through the Rio corridor as well. And then mitigation, one thing they really stressed was that mitigation is a really holistic or synergistic approach, where if you're traveling, a great example is south of Munn's Park on I-17, where you have that eight-foot fence on either side of the road. You kind of have those mounds or escape routes, so that if elk get trapped in between the fence, they have a way of getting out, and there's underpasses as well. So, the best solution is the utilization of all three of those together in unison, not just picking fence or just picking underpasses. That's their preference and that's their recommendation. And then, like I mentioned before, the meetings and communication is ongoing as we go forward towards final design, regardless of alignment. One other place that we've spoken to is the Open Space Commission and working with our open space staff here. Back in August of '21, this area, specifically this little green peninsula that comes down here towards Hoffman Tank from the floodplain, was actually prioritized as their top priority for acquiring for open space for the city. So, I don't want to steal their thunder. I believe they're coming here in August of this year for bringing that forth to council. But one thing they did want to stress is the importance of the scenic beauty, this space, and the connectivity of this area. So, this would connect the Rio out to Fisher Point, the Rio, Walnut Canyon, Fort Tuthill, Rio to Anderson Mesa, and just the importance of that corridor, or these corridors, for recreationalists as well as for wildlife. And we've approximated the alternative alignment on this screen as well, so you can see the original and the alternative in the context of, of the open space, as well as, this image was actually shared in October of 2020 with council as part of the land use framework. I wanted to touch briefly on the blue and green alignments that were shown briefly last week. These line works were conceptualized by the design team really early on when we were given direction to investigate an alternative alignment based on what we knew at the time in very initial conversations with large parcel property owners, not all the large parcel property owners. So, based on that conversation where that started back in October, we worked with them over the last six months, all the large parcel property owners, all four of them that would be, excuse me, impacted by the alternative alignment, to arrive at the salmon line. So, last week, we had talked about potentially going back and revisiting this, but the last six months has been revisiting that and specifically addressing what would work in the context of development that they either are developing or will develop or don't know, because there are large parcel property owners out here that don't have a plan on how they're going to develop their land, but were willing to partner to make this opportunity happen. So, to be cognizant of a middle ground for them, what they presented was the salmon line, and several of them have expressed that if the salmon line were to move, that the partnership would dissolve, and the alternative alignment would not be conducive to plans for their property. So, I hope that brings a little more understanding and background to the blue and the green lines. And then as a cost comparison between the original alignment and the alternative alignment is that they're very comparable. If you look at the quantities for asphalt, concrete, or footstools, looking in the context of what would be constructed as a two-lane road, either alignment will be constructed as a two-lane road from the, from the beginning. So, if we're doing the alternative alignment or the original alignment, it's a two-lane road with a median or center turn lane at times wherever there's intersections. And then they would also have a sidewalk on one side, which would be the north, currently is the north or the west side, and a footst trail on the south or the east side. So, part of that is, is looking at the, the calculations haven't been made to actually come up with a monetary value, which actually in today's climate is quite challenging to do, as we've seen with other projects here at the city. But it's good to know that apples to apples, they're fairly similar in cost when you're looking at the alternative to the original. And then again, just reminding that per 419 approval, it was funding 40% of, of a final alignment. And then, as promised briefly, the minor arterial engineering criteria. So, I'll just read this briefly. "The minor arterials provide capacity and continuity for travel between different districts of the region. Adjacent lands uses, adjacent land uses include residential and commercial areas, open space, public lands, industrial sites, and institutional sites. The activity center for a district will often be located along a minor arterial or at the intersection of a minor arterial with another minor arterial or a major collector." So typically, when we look at minor, minor arterials, the design speed is 40 miles per hour, the maximum grade is 6%. And then a median is required, and that median can undulate in width depending on where turn lanes come about for intersections. And then it's two or four lanes depending on traffic volume. But again, this one will be designed as a two-lane road, not a four-lane road to be constructed. Parkwayes, sidewalks, and bike lanes are included in that. And then in this case, we're looking at a footst trail, as mentioned previously, footst trail on one side of the roadway. And I wanted to touch also on community outreach. So, as we mentioned before, we had outreach to the small parcel property owners, the large parcel property owners. Last week, I didn't mention that we spoke to two local nonprofits that I'll show on the next slide, several council meetings. And then, we originally had planned to come to council in fall. That's what the May update to the small parcel property owners had stated, that the decision would be made in the fall, but it was expedited based on development in Canyon Del Rio and this partnership with the large parcel property owners, and really wanting to have direction before council recess so that progress can be made during that time of the summer as well. So, but it was really driven by needs for Canyon Del Rio, especially as they look to continue their development south of what would be the salmon line, because it really is critical to their backbone as far as how they're developing that. And then, as well, the, the planning changes with what would be embedded in, in that final alignment, if that is the final alignment. And I will state here, too, that Capstone Homes is present. Mayor, you had stated last week for an update with Canyon Del Rio. They are present if council wishes to have an update after this presentation. They are more than welcome. Mr. Rotten is here to, to update you on that if you would like, but not till I'm done. Then this was shared last, last week as well with the community outreach. The, the two that are new is this Friends of Flagstaff, excuse me, Friends of the Rio, which was in December of 2020, staff did a presentation to their organization, as well as Friends of Flagstaff's Future was in August of '21. Other than that, this slide really hasn't changed, other than adding last week's meeting up here. And then I enlarged this map, because I think last week it was, it was enlarged, but I think it could be a little larger to, to share the intent here. And I will state that I added this little magenta-black line here just to help visualize where the alternative alignment approximately falls. This magenta line is not in the regional plan. But as you can see here, the original line is this blue future minor arterial that's shown in the regional plan. And then most of the alternative alignment is shown here as a future minor collector, and then a major, major, my, or, excuse me, major, future major collector, excuse me, for what is Harold Ranch Road. So, that one, actually, the, this would serve a considerable contribution to an alternative alignment. If that's the final alignment, there would be a lot of traffic that would be carried by Harold Ranch Road, as well as this magenta line over to the original as well. So, there certainly is significance in Harold Ranch being on this as part of the alternative alignment. But again, this magenta one is what is going to be the deviation from what's shown currently on the regional plan maps. And then, as I promised, there's two cross-sections here. So, this is existing John Wesley Powell, and this is very similar to what we're talking about in design currently with, this is between Lake Mary Road, and I believe it's Lynx Drive that goes into Pine Canyon. But as you can see here, there's a center median, there's two lanes of travel, there's a footst trail on one side, and this one just has a shoulder. I like the, the next example a little better. This one shows the off-street sidewalk, has on-street bike lanes, two lanes of travel, median turn lane, and a footst trail. So, this is probably the closest real representation of what was currently being designed. But we would be coming back to council once we determine a final alignment with those design plans and make sure that bike and pedestrian improvements are geared for, you know, the direction of council. So, it's, it's, I don't want to say that the, the design that we have now is finalized. There's certainly flexibility. The team would be coming back to council to review that design with council. But I hope this helps conceptualize both graphically and schematically on what we're looking at for a cross-section here. And then, I think that really wraps up our presentation, and happy to answer questions when that time comes. And if you guys would like, or the council would wish to hear from Mr. Rotten, he is available as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to entertain some questions here from council. I do have one of my own, but let's save the discussion until after public participation. Let me pull up, make sure. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, David, for the presentation and your work on this. So, a couple quick questions. Is there a way to cap this project at two to three lanes versus keeping that door open?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeff Baumann, Traffic Engineer and Acting City Engineer. So, the minor, these, the road and the original alignment and the salmon alignment are both minor arterials, which are typically two lanes or four lanes based on traffic, and that's been our proposal to date. We know in the first 10 to 20 years from now, the traffic volume should be low enough for two lanes. There is the possibility as, on this map's a good map, as Little America builds out, as Symmetry and Jumper Point build out, and Gibson, depending on their density, the need could be there for four lanes. So, the staff's recommendation is that you maintain that width for four lanes, because it could be needed. It's not, it's not a definite thing, but we recommend that you do keep that space available. But you do have, you certainly have a choice.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
Just a, sorry, Shimoney, just to follow up, I, I was late to the unmute button. But we can continue towards a two-lane road while just keeping an easement for a four-lane road. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's our recommendation.
And just to clarify, it may be 20-plus years before a four-lane road would be recommended for this location.
That's correct. It could be a very long time. This, this alignment, not to get into too much detail, but this alignment doesn't carry a lot of through traffic from the community from one end to the other because it parallels the interstate. The interstate is always going to have a higher speed and can be more convenient for most crosstown trips. The majority of trips on this road are being developed through this land development. So, it's all based on those densities, what's going to happen in the future, and we anticipate that buildup to take some time.
Good. Thanks, Jeff. And my apologies for cutting you off there, Councilmember Shimoney. I just wanted to clarify the, the points.
Totally. I'll get, and Jeff, don't sit down quite yet.
You were supposed to wait until he actually sat down.
Jeff, can we, can we lessen the speed to like 25 here? Is that something we're able to do?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, so, we did put that slide up a few slides ago that talked about the engineering standard for minor arterials is, the design speed is typically 40 miles per hour, and that has, and, and that has a lot to do, again, with these longer trips that an arterial handles. I think we could look at reducing the design speed to something like 35 would be reasonable on an arterial. I don't think 25 would be a reasonable expectation for people on an arterial unless, unless the development activity along and adjacent to the road was something really dense, buildings forward, big sidewalks, like through a downtown area. That's not what we're anticipating here. So, our recommendation, again, standard is 40, and we're recommending 35. You also have a choice there. You could do something different, but...
Counsel, I think you know where I'm at on that. Less speed, the better, in my opinion. And then, Jeff, just a couple more quick questions. Would, do we have the enough space and a nice runway to do footst trail on both sides of the, of the road?
Yes, we do. The typical section that we showed a few minutes ago had travel lanes and then bike lanes on each side, and we definitely have the ability to switch those bike lanes from in the street to back of curb. That's a design detail. We're, we're just not there yet with this project. We're just trying to figure out the alignment today. We'll be back in the future to talk about design when we get there.
And then my, my last question, Mayor and Council and staff and everybody in attendance is just in regards to soundproofing walls. Are there any sections of either alignment of which soundproofing walls have been considered?
Again, we're not into design-level details for this project. We're just trying to sort out the alignments. If council wanted to give us some direction to look into sound walls, we could, but we're not there with the project yet. We haven't, we just haven't gotten to that level of detail.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember House?
I'm sorry, you're going to be right back up there, probably.
Again, you should have waited until he actually sat down.
David knows all the answers, too.
I mean, either of you probably can answer this question, but one of the things that came up last time in the conversation, and first, thank you for this presentation and going into some of the deeper details of, of the background of this. But one of the big concerns that came up was the, the preservation and safety for the wells for, for residents that live out in that area. And being out and seeing it, I know that was a major concern for many of those residents. So, has any consideration been given to that at this point, or, sorry, you could have sat down.
Councilmember House, thank you for the question. We have reached out to Water Services to inquire about well studies and water in this area. We are also, I was talking with a small parcel property owner prior to this meeting, too, in, in wanting to balance, a delicate balance between how far do you go in design and studies before you know an alignment has been chosen. So, we've been erring on the side of being wise stewards with taxpayer money before we know which alignment to go with. And then, once we know that alignment, then we can take a look at the studies that are impacting well water, wildlife, whatever the facets are that are necessary for appropriate design and for level of comfort for council and the public.
Great. Thank you.
And the one question I had is regarding, regarding the cost. And, yeah, I understand that it's about equivalent, whether original route, alternate route. But what is the cost differential expected for doing that blue or green route? And, yeah, the way you're looking at me as is that that really hasn't been...
Mayor, the, the calculations haven't been made on any of the alignments. And again, the, the blue and the green were done as an initial idea of where potential alignment could be based on initial discussions. So, there was not even design done on those. It was looking at some topography to see how a line may align, but not necessarily looking at the vertical or horizontal curves or any, you know, rudimentary engineering done on those two lines. So, speculation on, on cost for that, quantitatively, they should be more affordable because the length is shorter. That probably can be said relatively conclusively. However, we don't have, excuse me, we don't have a numerical value on any of the alignments at this point. So, it's all quantitatively based. We do have some idea of quantities, and I can bring up Danny from Peak Engineering if there's more specific. I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to pretend to be an engineer and speak to the, the analysis that they've done behind it. But it's, it's too initial in the design to have any actual dollar values for an alignment. But we can qualitatively say these two are similar. Green and blue are likely more affordable because, based on the fact that they are shorter.
Gotcha. Because, yeah, when, when I was out there, there, you know, just looking at the topography, I was concerned if a bridge would need to be involved, and that certainly escalates costs quite substantially. And that, that was really my, my concern. Look at that.
So, let me put this one up here, Mayor. This, this...
You had a follow-up there, yeah.
So, that one crossing D on the original alignment, that is a more restrictive canyon crossing of the Rio. So, in the original alignment, that was shown as a bridge with piers and girders going across. The dotted portion of this image... earlier in the presentation, to make that as a more affordable crossing versus having an elevated at-grade bridge. So there are options for making crossings a little more affordable. Does that help answer?
That does. That, that was just one of my big concerns, was if we're putting in a bridge here, that is extraordinarily expensive. And with looking at what was going on there, I didn't know what possibilities necessarily would exist to prevent having to put a bridge in any one of the routes we're looking at.
Yeah. And Mayor, in these initial, again, I'm trying to reiterate, I hope it's coming across, the design is really early. So a lot of these discussions are still kind of in the brainstorming stage. But this is one item, I'm looking at value engineering design and how to bring down the costs on any alignment in this area. We want to be, again, good stewards of taxpayer money and make the, the money go as far as we can with our roadway, bike and pet improvements.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Cut everyone off here. Any further questions from council before we move to public participation? All right. All right, I'm not seeing anything in the chat either. So let's move on for public participation before we have additional discussion from council, starting with Darren Smith.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for listening to me. Some of you may have read my letter that I sent out. Thanks for the people that did respond back. I'm probably just going to say a lot of what I said in there. You know, I know I haven't been out in this area as long as some people, but I have been out there in 10 years. And when we designed our house, we met with city. You know, they said that they were going to do something similar to JW Pal, which is what we saw today. What was presented to us a year, year and a half ago was not the JW Pal that we know today. It was 130-foot wide with a 12-foot retaining wall, 45 feet off of my front door. You know, I, I'm for development. I'm a contractor here in town. I have been for 35 years. I moved back. I've raised my kids. I've graduated here. You know, we, you guys voted in October to, to look for a new alignment, which, you know, you guys passed. They found a new alignment. All these large parcel owners have agreed to it, to some extent, that we're here talking about it. The original option is going to take my land. It's going to take quite a bit of land from a lot of small parcel owners. The alternative alignment is going to go through developers' lands who are going to make millions off of this. And so I don't see why we're not letting them absorb the impact, rather than us that live here, that contribute, that, that have employees that contribute, that have, you know, stake in the community. You know, some of these parcel owners live here, some of these large parcel owners live here. I know for a fact there's quite a few of them that don't live in town and don't contribute to, to anything, really. I mean, we need houses, I know that, so they contribute, but, but not in the aspect that I see that's valued to me. As far as wildlife, again, you know, they're all going to be, impact wildlife. I see 100 elk walk through my front door every day. And to think that, not every day, but, you know, annually, you know, to think that they're going to be right on top of this four-lane highway at some point, maybe it's 10 years, maybe it's 20 years, we, nobody can really, nobody knows the answer to that, but we know at some point it'll be four lanes. You know, I mean, again, we've got an approved here. It doesn't go through anybody's property except for the large parcel owners. I understand the people on River Valley. I understand their concern and their impact, but they're not going to lose any of their property for it. It's going to be in their backyard, not in their front yard. The, the safety aspect of it is going to be a lot less than what it's going to see on that original alignment. And, and I just, I, I think it's a better, better alignment, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Dave Chapin?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council. I apologize early if I'm not spoken well today, as I have been quite upset and concerned over this matter. But I'll do my best to read what I have. First off, I'd like to disagree with that gentleman, that the salmon route is not in my backyard, it's in my front yard. And I'm sorry that the yellow route is in your front yard as well. Thank you to all of you that took the time to visit our area recently in concern of our neighborhood. Again, to be quite clear, my family is very much opposed to the salmon route. I certainly believe that now you have been there and looked at our situation in real-time firsthand, you can see that our area, homes and neighborhood would be, is quite evidenced, evident that these areas would be impacted greatly and that the road will have a devastating effect on our homes, properties and lives. The opportunity exists that this road extension can be built in areas to the west, either the alternate blue or green route, that would not impact existing homes, properties and The impact of constructing on the salmon route are numerous. Wells in the area, flood zone diminishing to our property values, diminishing to our lifestyle, wildlife in the area. I haven't heard anybody talk about the threat of wildland fire. We see practically every weekend on I-17, either chains dragging on the road or a carelessly thrown cigarette causing fire. The wind blows from west to east 90% of the time in that area. All the homes are to the east. A fire 26 years ago put Continental on watch and all the other neighborhoods on watch. A wildland fire in that area could be devastating to hundreds of homes and properties. It's a riparian area. It is mitigation of open space, not to mention many, many more. The opportunity exists to take the construction of this road far enough to the west that residents of River Valley Road, South Forest Street and Forest Dale are not impacted.
Please continue.
And large parcel owners and developers still benefit. This is the fairest alternative to all parties. As mentioned in the last council meeting a week ago Tuesday, some Forest Street, South Forest Street residents are actually in favor of the original yellow route. There are none River Valley Road residents in favor of the salmon route.
Thank you, sir. And we, we do have a three-minute timeline. I wanted you to finish your commentary, but thank you. I really appreciate it. All right, next is Peter Burgies. Oh, Berger. Looks like E-I-Z. I'm, I'm sorry about that. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Peter Berger. I represent Symmetry Companies as a president. We are both the owner of Pine Canyon Club and the developer of Pine Canyon and also the managing partner of the State Trust Land 405 acreage. I believe Lindsay may have a few comments to represent us as well, so I'll keep this brief. But, you know, my comments would be that we are in support of the, the salmon alignment for a variety of reasons that we feel it really allows this road. We know that the voters of Flagstaff approved to have JWP extended. And I can certainly appreciate some of the neighbors in here who would love to not see a road at all. In fact, I could say that there's probably, of our 600-plus residents at Pine Canyon, they love the enjoyment that currently, you know, JWP just deadens and there's no through-traffic there. So I can, I can certainly appreciate that, but I also know the value of progress in getting a road done. The, the salmon alignment, as it's represented, is also in alignment where there is a minor collector road already designed. So it's not as though it has not been contemplated that a road would go here. So while our preference is a salmon alignment, simply because we feel like we could help contribute to actually get the road done, not just acquire right-of-way in a sooner timeframe than the original alignment that we're looking at, we're referring to here as the yellow alignment, that's why we would favor the salmon. But we, you know, also favor the original alignment. And we also know that impacts folks. So we were really approached by the city to look and help come to a solution. And that's the spirit in which we're here, is to be collaborative with the city, to contribute the land, to allow this road to get built and constructed. And, you know, I'm just here to answer any questions. Lindsay may have a few words for us as well, but just want to let you guys know, we're here to collaborate and here to answer any questions or do our part to make sure we're contributing to, to help advance JWP.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Councilmember Sals?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Berger, thank you for being here. I do have a question. In the spirit of collaboration, is Symmetry willing to donate the easement on your property, donated to the city?
We hadn't, great question. You know, we hadn't really gotten into the overall economic impacts. I think it's kind of a broader understanding of how the 40% contribution by the taxpayer versus kind of what the development intensity could or could not be on the state trust land. So we are certainly willing to collaborate and find a way to kind of participate to get it done. It's hard to set up here right now without knowing cost or the overall scale of the design to say we're just willing to contribute the land, you know, in terms of donating it. But we are willing to be a seat at the table and help participate in the cost to get JWP done. Hope that answered your question.
Will you keep that in mind, please? Consider donating the easement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger.
Thank you.
All right, Babut?
Appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. First of all, thanks for being willing to make 24, 36 grand a year and make incredibly difficult decisions. So regardless of what you decide, appreciate your willingness to sit through these. It means, it means a lot that people step up and do that. So what we're talking about today is balancing competing interests and balancing competing needs. Mr. Babut, I'm here to set the alignment today. And what I want to ask you is it's, it's to contemplate how you can set the alignment without really understanding what that alignment is. I was out at the property, for the record. I do own a parcel on River Valley Road. There is no markings on what the salmon route is out there. You don't know if that is 20 feet out, 20 yards off the property line or 200 yards off the property line. So how do we favor or even comment on without knowing what that is? I want to applaud the council for taking the risk of saying, "Let's be good fiduciary taxpayer holders" and asking about condemnation and acquisition fees. It's smart that you're asking this question. I really believe that. But don't get us in the position, if we can, of trading one group set of problems with another group set of problems. The only alignment that doesn't trade those problems, in my estimation, is the green alignment. It's the only one that doesn't take neighbor-to-neighbor impacts. So the green alignment, to me, makes the most sense. We heard some initial guestimates, and to be fair, they're guestimates on cost of that alignment. I think the community should drive the alignment discussion. And so the details do really matter in terms of where those are. If it's 200 yards off that property line, that may be a very different discussion than if it's 75 feet off that. There's an impacted utility corridor that too often, I think, development uses as open space. It should be used as a transportation corridor. I really believe, and that is closely aligned with the green alignment. So I would ask you to make that commitment to be able to give us the information we can, that we need to make commentary without really understanding where that alignment is. It's hard. There's no markings. We don't know where it is. And that defines the level of impact. The green alignment gets around that all the way. So the last thing is, is to contemplate that commitment, to consider things like sound barriers, to consider things like moving that alignment at least a couple hundred yards off the property line. That's not my property, but it is some of my neighbors' properties out there. The last thing I want to say before I wind up and thank you again, is there has been chatter on the engineering firm doing this. I, I just want to state unequivocally, they are a high-quality caliber group. They should be trusted. They should have confidence in local businesses. Thanks for your time. Thanks for making a difficult decision.
Thank you. Brian Rota?
Brian Rowan with Capstone Homes. I am up here to show our support for the salmon line. We began working a year ago, looking at alternates, and then formally about eight months ago with the city, working at, looking at alternates. The green and the blue line have been studied. There, I, I appreciate city staff saying that there are shorter routes, there are much more expensive routes. We've studied them on the private side. Much, much more expensive, and they cross the widest point on the Rio. And go down cliffs and upgrade. It's extreme, extremely more expensive. Another point that I would like to make is Canyon Del Rio is actually the one owner in here that has no burden of providing any right-of-way or anything to, construction right-of-way, anything for John Wesley Pal. The project is approved with just completion of Forest Street to our boundary. That's done. We did work with the city exhaustively to try to come up with a route through Canyon Del Rio that would least impact Canyon Del Rio. So I, I, I understand people's concern. I very much understand the residents' concern. I've talked to many of them on the yellow alignment. It is a taking of, of their property that will happen. The city had the property at one time in an easement. The city relinquished that in the 90s and is now proposing taking that property again. That is, in my opinion, be a very extremely tough fight. So in the, in the, trying to work with the city, trying to work with, with city staff to find an alternate that would not require the taking of, of anybody's property except those that are willing to give it, is how we ended up with the salmon alignment. It was not an easy discussion. It was hours and hours and hours of negotiation and discussion. And just as any other small, small parcel owners don't want the road coming across their property, Canyon Del Rio didn't necessarily want the road coming across its property. Neither did Little America. Neither did Kelly Gibson. And all of them chose the least impact, impactful alignment to, to their properties. Kelly's not a developer. He's not here. He's in Colorado today. He bought the property for his kids. He's not a developer. He's chosen the least impactful alignment, just like River Valley Road was put on his property and property line. That's kind of his feeling also. I think Little America's here. They can speak to their concerns, but they don't have development plans right now. They are a property owner, just like a small property owner, but a large property owner. So while pushing the road 200 yards or whatever the distance is from where those property owners are willing to give, it's still a taking of their property. And so for all the work that's gone into this study and looking for an alignment, trying to find a solution, I think we have the best solution. We've looked at wildlife. We've looked at floodplain. We've looked at crossing. We've actually looked at cost and design because that impacts us greatly. This is the alignment that we prefer, is the alternate or the salmon alignment. So that's all. as the alternate or the salmon alignment. So that's all.
You have councilmembers else?
Thank you for being here, Mr. Rutan. I have two questions for you. In your experience, because you're, I believe you're also involved with Symmetry, correct?
Yes, I'm a partner.
So between Symmetry and Canyon Del Rio, and are you also involved with Juniper Point?
Yes, I own Juniper Point, a portion of the Symmetry property and Canyon Del Rio.
Okay. So between those three, involving those three properties, how much in private dollars have this company spent in conducting your studies, in working with the city and coming up with the new alignment?
I, I can't really speak to the symmetry Peter runs at. We're just invested in there. At Canyon Del Rio, I would suspect we've spent 50 to 100,000 in design of our own money, trying to get that road placed in the best position. And then we've, as has been stated, we've held up for about six months now submitting our site plan to get houses going on, on that portion that's going to be impacted by the road. So as a quick update for Canyon Del Rio, we didn't give it. The infrastructure is going on right now. We will spend about $30 million in the ground this year out there. We're just getting ready to write the city of Flagstaff a check for about 2.7 million. In the next following weeks, that's for the Butler improvements and the water line that you guys extended about two years ago. That's where we're at. We have plats that have been approved and site plans that have been submitted. So we're moving forward as quickly as we can, but have been held up on this portion of the property that the road affects. So.
Thank you for that update. My second question is the same question I've asked Mr. Berger is, would you please consider donating the easement slash right of way as we build this alignment?
Through where? Through?
Donating the easement and right of way to the city as we build this?
Well, the right of way will be dedicated to the city of Flagstaff, right? Correct.
So the city will not, that's, do we?
The city gets a dedicated right of way.
Dedicated right of way.
Yeah, that's not an easement.
Okay.
So.
So I guess since we have Mr. Rutan here, just kind of looking at the other side of the coin here, should the city decide to move forward with the old alignment, will it impact your property, the yellow line?
No. So Canyon Del Rio can just move forward, whether the old alignment or the new alignment. Well, the new alignment, we need to do a little bit of redesign, but the old alignment, Canyon Del Rio can just move forward.
And you have opted to support the new alternate alignment, the salmon line, in collaboration with the other property owners and working with city staff?
Yes. I think there's a great opportunity for the city of Flagstaff to actually plan roads, to plan circulation, to plan utilities over a fairly large swath of property that the city hasn't had the ability to be involved in. I do agree that only a two-lane road should be built. Three-lane, it's actually two lanes and a median turn lanes until it's needed. I think it is unwise for the city of Flagstaff to accept a minor arterial dedication that's smaller than the minor arterial size, because you're just going to end up in 30, 40 years with the exact same problems that you have on the original alignment. The city should have never gave those rights up that they had prior, and it's pointless to put yourself in that situation right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Salas. Any other questions? Sorry, my computer keeps logging off here, so just want to make sure that we don't have councilmember Shimonie or Aslan have a question. No, thank you. Jonathan Southworth.
Greetings, everyone. I'm grateful for all the sacrifices you made to be here today. First, let's all acknowledge that this is an incredible moment. In no small words, it's taken 13 billion years of star stuff colliding with each other, forming planets, and eventually coming together to form the wonderful Earth and people that are gathered here today. That is incredible, and it is important to remember the scale at which we all live. In my studies in university, a common framework my professors like to examine knowledge with there is a three-step process. First, the subject lies on the side of ignorant simplicity. An answer will always seem obvious. Then, a world of complexity, wide, vast, and deep, opens up all at once. This is the hardest place to navigate. It is where this discussion about the road has been up until this point. Finally, you arrive back at educated simplicity. Knowing all that we know about the wildlife, about the people, and about the future of Flagstaff, I believe that we've arrived at this educated simplicity. That doesn't make it easy. Decisions with this sort of legacy never are. Long after all of us and our grandchildren are gone, the concrete that we decide to pour will stay in the exact same spot. Indeed, if there was ever a time to be considering things such as legacy, as dramatic as it sounds, now is the time. With that, let's return to this present moment. We've already established that both the original and the alternate hurt the people who already live in Flagstaff. Fortunately, peak engineering, through their hard work and diligence, have provided us with an alternative, the green route. It's the route that's safest. It's the route that considers the needs of everyone in Flagstaff. It is the route that I support because to not support it would be to sacrifice someone else's pursuit of happiness, and we all know how important that is. I have empathy for each of you in this room. I understand how frustrating and personal this all is, but we need to look outside of ourselves. Progress can suck sometimes, but we have the power right now to make it a little better, to build Flagstaff a little stronger, to make the kind of city that listens and then takes actions based on what it knows to be true. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Ryan Southworth.
So, sorry. Proud Dad moment, right? I was a good kid. So I'm not usually this emotional as a military officer who's still serving in the reserves in the Air Force. My biggest concern right now has been for my neighbors, frankly. You all know me, I think by now. I've talked to each one of you, I think, individually. I'm a physician. My whole life has been about serving others. I'm an EMS physician. I'm also a critical care physician in the Air Force. And I don't envy your position today, and I do appreciate every one of you, all of you joining us online as councilmembers. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and every councilmember that's doing this. I know it's hard. And I'd like to acknowledge too that, you know, Brian Rutan and Symmetry and Little America, they're not bad people, and this is not about a blame game or trying to force people to do things. Sometimes the evil is actually in the bureaucracy that we create ourselves and not with an individual, which kind of makes it hard, makes these decisions very difficult. I would have to agree with my son. When I look at everything, it seems like this discussion has been forced into just this red route or salmon, whatever you want to call it, and this yellow route. If you look at all the people here, you can't do either of these without harming someone out here. And I have to ask myself as an officer, we live in a democratic republic with elected people that are supposed to represent people. And when I take a look at things, I think of the mission and values of the city of Flagstaff and the guiding principles that wrote those mission and values. Those mission and values, to quote them directly, sorry, is the pursuit of growth that is respectful of our environment, preserves the unique sense of place and community and harmony with the community's historical character, unique cultural resources, and natural environment. The red route or the salmon route, whichever one you want to call it, don't do these things. And right before you is almost a psychological slight manipulation because we don't see the green and the blue on the screen right before us. Those are still options that are very much on the table for you as a council to do. You just won't have the support of the large landowners, and I understand their concerns. I ask you to do the right thing, though, and stand with all of the people that are over here and not kowtow to the money that they might have. And that's all I've got. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Ryan. I'm not saying any questions at this time. This is Joanne Miller.
Hello. I would like to thank the mayor and councilmembers who took time out to view the area in question. Now that I've had more than five days to get, oh.
To get over the shock of what I have been told for the last four decades is going to be destroyed in a wink of an eye. I have lived on the Rio Day flag for four-plus decades along with El Kirk. I knew in the future this area of the Rio would be developed, that there would be homes, that all of the biggest, oldest trees would be cut down and sold for lumber, that the eagles, ospreys, hawks I was used to seeing in those trees would no longer be there. Flagstaff is known for its natural environment, outdoor activities, hiking, biking, running. Once we destroy the Rio Day flag, area behind Little America is too late. It is gone forever. No going back. Now that flag is growing rapidly, this is our only chance to preserve and continue this riparian green space, El Corridor for all of us. Last summer, I spent time with family in Durango, Bagosa Springs, and Salida, Colorado. All of those towns have beautiful planned green zones along the river. You see families with their kids riding bikes, their pets, runners, joggers, everybody uses those. They go there after work, after they've had a busy day, to get away, to renew, to spend quality time. Canyon Del Rio now has a road cut all the way to Herald Ranch Road by the mailbox. Seems they are in a big hurry to put us local people in this position. To the developers, seems that a green zone in the front of your properties would be a great selling point. Instead, you choose to destroy a natural riparian green zone by killer cotton and bulldozing entire areas. For my neighbors on Forest Street, I agree with you. It should be a two-lane, not a four-lane, and it shouldn't be 40 miles an hour. They should get water, sewer, and fiber optics for internet. Why is it the developers come here, the people that have lived here have done hall water, and they have no services? But the developers come in, they get everything, but yet the residents here do without. Thank you for your time, and I know you're all in a difficult position, but I would like to see us as a community, all my neighbors, all around me, working together to do what's best. I'm in favor of the green route. Does not involve any of the property owners, just the largest parcel owners who have nothing there, and they can put the road there and develop around there. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. That completes the cards for speaker requests here in person, so we will turn it over to the electronic participants.
Mayor, we have two for public comment. Our first one is going to be Lindsay Shroop. Lindsay, you can go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Stacy, thank you so much. Mayor, Council, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Wonderful. Mayor, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor Sweet, councilmembers, thank you so much for this opportunity to be in front of you, or virtually in front of you. Virtual, I'm going to say virtual anxiety is real. Councilmen Aslan and Shimonie, that it's far easier to be in person and look in the lights of all of your eyes. But thank you for the opportunity. As you know, I represent multiple property owners in this area, specifically this afternoon. I'm going to speak on behalf of State Trust Land 405, which is Peter Berger, who you heard from, with Symmetry, as well as Brian, and Little America. And I believe Jim Hill is online in order to, and he can speak, speak more into Little America. But this is, this is an interesting spot for me because I've got two clients. They've got similar interests but a little bit of a different position, and that's the same as everyone else there in the room tonight. These decisions are always difficult. The original line, alignment is the approved alignment. It has been contemplated by city council, staff, and the citizens of Flagstaff for many years. The reason we're here tonight and having this discussion about the new proposed alignment is in response to objections from that original alignment, or the yellow line now, as we like to call it. The large property owners in the area came together in response to those concerns with regard to the original alignment, working with the city and other stakeholders to propose the alternative alignment. What's great about the alternative alignment, and Brian and Peter both hit on this, is it removes all the right of way from the existing smaller lot property owners. And so again, I want to reiterate that salmon line, as we like to call it, does remove that all the right of way will be taken from and dedicated by the large lot property owners. So, but here's the difference between my two clients. Little America, and speaking on behalf of the Little America family and board, will be Jim Hill. They do prefer the original alignment. However, they're willing to come to the table and discuss the alternative and have worked together to say, if we are going to have an alternative alignment, what's one that can work for us? State Trust Land, they prefer the alternative alignment. So I told you the differences. What are the similarities? One, I can tell you they are both very, all the large lot property owners are opposed to the blue and green alignments. You got a correspondence from my office. We just wanted to make sure that it was clear. There is strong opposition to those two alignments. What else do they agree on? They both support two lanes of traffic. There is no intention on behalf of the large lot property owners to have a superhighway through there.
Ms. Shubi, please feel free to continue, but if you could wrap it up because the three minutes was done, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, and I didn't hear that online. I'm very close, Mayor, although I'm used to being the applicant and being able to speak longer. I did, I timed myself. The third, the third similarity between both my clients here is they're both willing to come to the table and to work with staff and the community to come up with the best alignment to get this road constructed. So, and as Peter alluded to, you know, the preference of the salmon alignment is only by a hair. You know, Brian and Peter would both move forward with the original alignment, but what we think about the salmon alignment, it's less property owners to get together to reach consensus to get this constructed. So again, thank you for the time. I'm available for any questions, and these decisions are difficult. I echo what Mr. Babett said. You guys have a tough spot, but we're really thankful you're taking the time to consider all the options.
Thank you, Ms. Shubi. Councilmember Salas has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Shubi, thank you for participating online. Could you provide an explanation why your clients oppose the green and blue lines?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman. I would say, you know, the severance of the property is one of the big, is one of the big concerns. You know, I compliment Canyon Del Rio. Gosh, they have a very large impact by this, this road, and I'm not speaking on behalf of Canyon Del Rio this afternoon, but as that road does, the salmon alignment sever their property, they are willing to do that in order for the best interest to get this road connected. best interest to get this road connected. As far as the blue and the green alignments, I will tell you on State Trust Land, we have spent a lot of time planning that property, and that alignment interferes with the planning that we have, that we have. As far as the Little America property, that severance really does interfere with development, future development opportunities, and we're very much opposed. And so what we feel like with the salmon alignment, the burden is still on the large lot property owners. However, that burden is less by the location of the salmon. And, you know, there are, we are going to get development out there, right? We hit that. There are going to be homes, and there's benefits. There's a housing crisis that we will, that will help be achieved with future development out there. It's also a fabulous opportunity, I think, as David Peterson, you know, the opportunity to plan now for this alignment is fabulous. And so, Councilman, Councilwoman, member Solis, to answer your question, the burden is still on the large lot property owners for all of the right-of-way. It's just placed in a way that is less burdensome for the future development of those projects. Because again, council, councilmember, they're still landowners, right? And, you know, whether it's a smaller lot or a larger lot, it still is a burden and it still is a cost, but they're willing to come to the table as partners.
Thank you, Ms. Shubi. All right.
Oh, I, yeah, I thought I answered the question. I'm happy to add more. Council, Councilmember Solis, if you have more for me to add. But it's, the burden is still on them, it's just, it's a less burdensome location for them. But they are still, you know, I want to make sure everyone knows, the salmon is still a burden on these property owners.
Thank you, Ms. Shubi.
Thank you. We have another public participant online.
Yes, our next commenter is Peter Birch. Peter, you can go ahead and address mayor and council.
Hi, mayor, councilmembers, can you hear me okay?
Yes, please proceed.
Hi, thanks for taking the time and to review this. My name's Peter Birch, and I represent the Brighton 57 acres. If you would, if you were to pull that up, it's kind of right where the original and the alternate routes kind of split there. You know, we have owned that since, or my family's owned that since 2003, so just shy of 20 years, and we've been in favor of something happening there at some point because we currently don't have access crossing the Rio de flag. And I understand this alternative route doesn't necessarily give us access either, but as David kind of mentioned, we are in favor of maybe a less intrusive crossing there to our property and possibly being able to do something on our own in the future. It seems that the most effective way to get something to happen here after 20, 30 years of going back and forth is the alternative route. So although I'm sympathetic to, you know, the neighbors that this impacts and their yards and everything, it seems to make most sense to me to go through some form of the large property owners. And since the large property owners have seemed all in favor of the salmon route, it seems that that's, that's the, you know, the best option. So, like I said, I'm kind of in favor of anything happening here. I'd like to see some movement here and not to go back and table it and continue to discuss. It seems like at some level, somebody is not going to be pleased, as they, as they always are. So, you know, I can answer any questions, but I am in favor of the alternative route.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any questions at this time from council for you, so with that, we will turn it back to council for discussion on the alignment. So opening it up for council commentary or additional questions as necessary. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, mayor. I'll start us off. First of all, I want to thank all the members of the public who engaged in this meeting tonight and in this process over the many years. David, I do have a question for you. I guess I'm still struggling to understand why the blue and green options aren't, are those viable options for us to be considering?
Councilmember Shimoney, I think the best representative to speak to that would be the large parcel property owners, but to my understanding, they have negotiated to the salmon line, and that is not something that is still on their table, we've been told. At least two of them, that if the salmon line shifted, that they would have no interest in an alternative line. Does that answer your question, councilmember?
I guess so. I guess I wonder what those implications mean in terms of us continuing to pursue that, let's say, the green line? Because I'll just share, you know, to me, the green line option, from the beginning, in my opinion, but I guess I'm still trying to wrap my mind around the complications and, and what the real hurdle is in pursuing that green option.
Yeah, councilmember Shimoney, we can bring up the large parcel property owners to speak to that, but I can't speak beyond what I've stated.
So just in closing, larger parcel owners are opposed to that, and they've negotiated the salmon option. I guess my question to mayor and council is, does that mean we can't pursue the green option? And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, mayor. Last Tuesday, I suggested that we go with either the green or the blue option. However, last Thursday, I went out there and walked this area. Actually, I toured all the routes. We spent like four hours out there, which, you know, to look at what's on the screen there, it's a bunch of lines on a map, which don't mean a lot. But when I, we actually went out there to address Mr. Shimoney's comments, the green and the blue line, to me, are unacceptable because that is a large stretch of very unspoiled riparian area, which to me has a lot of value. So I do not support the green or blue routes.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Other council questions or comments? Councilmember McCarthy?
Maybe I should go into more detail. Okay, I figured this out. There's no good solutions. And I say that kind of tongue-in-cheek, but it's funny because it's true. Every route has problems. So the bottom line, after I've spent four hours out there, and I looked at a topographical map in great detail, is I support the so-called salmon route, but I think we can do some minor tweaks to that route. And I'll just kind of hold back on the minor tweaks until, you know, if council decides we're going to go with the original route, then there's no point in me talking about minor tweaks on the salmon route. But assuming that the council decides to go with the salmon route, then I can talk in more detail about the minor tweaks, which we're in, which my intent will be to reduce the impact on the nearby homeowners. So I'll leave it at that for now, but I'll come back.
Thank you.
I ain't go nowhere.
Other councilmembers? Councilmember Solis?
Just curious. Mr. Peterson, have you heard from NAU with regard to their feedback on the proposed alternative alignment?
Councilmember Solis, we met with NAU last fall. At that time, they shared with us that they're working on a master development plan for this parcel that should be completed in approximately the next two years. They did not share any intent at that time with their purpose for the land was. They clearly had, would like to see access to their property, that was shared in the meeting as well, but they didn't share purpose or development plans for the property, and we have been talking with NAU.
Just a friendly suggestion, moving forward with the design and development of this project, it will serve the city well if we keep communicating with NAU with regards to the progress of this project. For everyone's information, I met with Mr. Josh Mayer yesterday and had mentioned that, you know, in his mind, NAU will support the salmon line, the alternative line. But they were also, it was also noted that they have been, they have not been involved with developing the alternative alignment, which we now call the salmon line.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
I'll just say that I had a conversation with the NAU, and I did not talk to him about the green or blue routes, but we did talk about the salmon route and the original route. Their preference is the original route, but they can easily live with the salmon route. So I think they could go, I don't think they're going to throw any weight around on this issue. I think they could go with either one.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Just Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to start, I also had a conversation with Josh yesterday and came to the same understanding as Councilmember McCarthy, that their preference was the original, they could live with the salmon. The blue and green were not options for them. I want to be as brief as possible with any comments tonight, but I want to address them primarily to the members of the public who have spoken, whether along the original route or along the new one. I think the most important thing to say is that you've been heard. This is not an easy decision, no matter which way we go. It does not feel like there's a huge win either way. However, one of the things that I definitely do support, whichever path we take on this, is keeping it at that two-lane. I understand the importance of planning for the future, but on both of those, understanding what the original plans were along the yellow route and the development plans that travel along the salmon route, neither of them were planned for major roadways. One of the things that I noted was, in discussing the salmon route, it was mentioned that a long part of it, it was originally planned as a minor collector, and I think that's going to speak to what councilmember Shimoney was mentioning about speed, where a minor collector has speeds as low as 35. And whichever way we go, that's what I would be looking to see, is some control of speed, control of the width of that road, and maintaining bike, ped, and alternative modes of transportation along those paths, especially to align with our vision of pursuing those for Flagstaff's future and not necessarily relying on vehicle transportation along our roadways going into the future. I think that supports our climate initiatives. I think it supports the communities that we're trying to serve, and it's, it's one of the things that's going to be really important to me as part of this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Vice Mayor?
This has been a tough week. I went out three different times myself, and I know all of council went out as well. And like I've mentioned, I've lived out in this area two different times in my many years in Flagstaff. Not easy, and I'm really happy to see the public engagement, the large property owners' engagement, staff listening to us and working on the alternative alignments. I think all of this and us working together is a step in the right direction and is important. So I really do appreciate that. I wish that the green line made more sense, I guess. And I'm not ruling it out. I can't wait to see the discussion move along tonight. You know, I'm not positive on that, but while we discuss that, I am thankful that we at least came up with an alternative that we can do that doesn't take property. That was important for me, and I thank staff and the other large property owners for helping us get to at least that point. And I too would like to see this be at least 35 miles and not the 40. I think that is a good accommodation. The sound barrier walls, if we end up needing them, I would like to see that as part of the plan. I have been out to Joni's property, and she has the big pond, and it's beautiful. And I would like to encourage staff, if we do go this route, to look at any way we can finagle the road a little bit to give even more of a buffer, if that is our decision. I think we, if we can, we owe it to the property owners to try our very, very best on that. The two to three lanes with the bike ped, I'm thankful that we have come to that. I see the future that we may need the four lanes. It may not be the popular vote, but I do think we need to keep that area dedicated for the future. It's just smart planning, in my opinion. And those are my thoughts for now. I would like to hear what my colleagues are thinking.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Rasslin, and if you could do season cues, I have the chat box up, so sometimes it's hard for me to see the raised hands, but Councilmember Rasslin, I apologize, I don't know how long you've had it up, but thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I, I'm not allowed to use the, I'm not able to use the comment box in my current, the way I've logged on here, so I apologize for that. If I wait long enough, I'll just chime in and let you know I've been waiting, but no, I haven't had my hand up for very long.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is not a, this is not a fun or joyous discussion at all. I don't find anything about it funny. It's really difficult. So I have a lot of thoughts, I'm just going to kind of popcorn them along here a little bit. I do think a solution is going to develop based on the discussion that we're having right now. I don't have a firm commitment to one route or the other. I do have some thoughts to share. First, I'll start with some general things. I will not support any final design that does not include wildlife passage, large enough for ungulates, especially elk. So I really need to see that in the final design for a lot of regional purposes, not just in terms of the residents' interactions with the wildlife. I worry that a sound retention wall is just going to block those neighbors' view of that wonderful meadow riparian area to the northwest. So I, I'm going to withhold judgment on that. I think if we could find a way to reduce noise from this roadway to those residents without interrupting the view shed too drastically, if there's an engineering solution there, I'd be interested in exploring that. I really understand where Councilmember Shimoney is coming from, and I appreciate your questions, Adam. I would like to see this remain two lanes. I, you know, I've been very public about this. I never voted for this proposition. I voted no, is what I mean to say. I don't want to see these roads go in. I don't think we need connectivity between John Leslie Powell and Fort Street, and there's many reasons for that. I'm not going to get into those here, but be that as it may, this is a decision that we have to deal with, and we have to make a decision. And so I just want everyone to know that my heart is in not doing this at all, and the tough decision is going to be one that leaves people unhappy. Another thing that I'd like to say is, I was on that visit with Councilmember McCarthy and Councilmember House. We did spend a long time out there. It was wonderful to meet the residents and to pet their dogs and to listen to their horses complain at us, as well as hear their own protests. And it's just such a beautiful area. It's such a wonderful, fantastical- And it's just such a beautiful area, it's such a wonderful, fantastical wonderland that you guys have lived in, and I understand why you feel suddenly punched in the gut by this alternative. One thing I do know from the site visit is that we really avoided a catastrophe by mandating that we come up with some other alternatives. The original alignment, the yellow line, would, in my mind, is not an option. So that needs to be taken just right off the table. It condemns property, it goes right through, I don't remember the number, but a fair amount of city residential homes. I think that Mr. Brian Rayton's concerns about litigation are legitimate and problematic. And so that leaves me with this, the Salmon Line, the Blue Line, and the Green Line. And, you know, I was really hoping for some sort of cost estimate that we could look at, that would make it clear that the Green Line is cost prohibitive. In my mind, it would be. That's not what I'm hearing from our city staff today. It seems to me, just by looking at the terrain and the way the road would need to be raised, that costs would jump enormously if we went that route. I'm not entirely, I don't think the Green Line really affects Canyon Del Rio project at all. Obviously, it would affect Little America developers, and I'm guessing that Kelly Gibson would want at least some access. So, you know, the compromise line, to me, seems to be the Blue Line. It impedes upon some of the existing property owners just a little bit, but not all of them. It doesn't cut that beautiful riparian corridor completely in half, and it still provides access for everybody, including NAU. And I will say, with all due respect to Josh Mayer and our NAU community, it's great to hear their concerns and to weigh those and bring them into the conversation. Their concerns here are on the bottom of my list of priorities. First, I want to make our residents happy. I want to make sure that we're developing this in a way that is functional and allows the developers to move forward. And then NAU, I'm not, you know, my guess is that they're gonna use that land for a land swap down the road anyway, I'm not sure. Their needs really need to be considered, given the weight of the considerations of the residents in the area. So, great to listen to them, but not really part of my calculus at this time. So that's kind of where I'm sitting with this. And again, I will not, I will not support any of this if we don't have the sufficient wildlife corridor infrastructure in place. And I'm curious to see what folks are thinking about the Green Line. I don't fully understand how the Green Route negatively impacts the developers, except that it cuts right through Little America's property, and that my guess is that it's gonna be a very expensive route to build. And I think it does take a fairly wide swath of riparian area and bifurcate it exactly in half. If we go with the Blue Line or the Salmon Line, that's not gonna happen. It will impact the residents, but it won't impact the elk as much, for example. Okay, so I'm done thinking out loud a little bit here. I'd like to hear what other people, where other people are leaning, if what I've had to say impacts or affects anything that others are thinking, and I look forward to the rest of the conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin. So I just wanna focus our efforts here. It's extremely important for us to, you know, give our input in terms of design and two lanes and foots trails. Tonight, we are here to discuss the alignment. So as we, let's focus in a little bit here. Again, also important discussions, but we really need to come to a conclusion here amidst limited time. So I wanted to give my thoughts here. I hope you know that we really, really are taking this seriously, all of council, going out there, delaying this decision, really trying to investigate what's, what's going on, what it looks like, and how that might impact everyone. So, to start us off for this discussion, when I'm looking at this is, what has the greatest impact on people's lives right now? And right now, I see that the original line is going to be more damaging to people's personal property. It's going to be the most damaging towards, I mean, having a property and then having your kids there and having to get an easement on their, your neighbor's lot to even access your own property? And I lived on a busy street myself, with my small kids that I wouldn't allow in the front yard, and I would hate to see that happen. Also, I would like to mention that the, you know, the argument before the original line was, well, this was planned for 40 years. Well, in the 1990s, the city sold that land. They sold that easement. So how many mixed signals does that provide when development and roads don't actually happen and we're selling off the land to, obviously, prior council? And how people are planning their own property and how it moves forward? So, when I am looking at this, I will tell you, the original line seems to be the most disruptive to people's way of life. And that, to me, is off the table. When we look at the other lines, which I'm willing to consider options and would like to hear council's discussion more thoroughly about it, the thing is, is that that Salmon Line was a compromise. I mean, it's not that the large property owners want that. In fact, the majority want the original line. This was put forward as a compromise to begin with, though clearly it was not as large of population that should be included in those conversations, that I am not happy that it was 12 days beforehand that we were hearing of, that residents heard about what was going on. That does not make me happy. But no, that this, this was a compromise. This was not that, I mean, if I was Canyon Del Rio, I wouldn't want a road in, through my property if I didn't have to. Neither would Little America, neither would Gibson. The original line is closer to NAU, so that they have to develop less if that's what they decide to do in the future. So in some ways, this is a Plan B for most everyone. Again, though, this is not something that I am 100% set on. What I am set on is that we're not doing the original route, which would be the most disruptive, in my mind, to people's way of life in the properties that they own, the small property owners. And again, the large property owners, most of them would actually prefer the original route more than anything else, so let's recognize the fact that this was in the heart of some level of compromise, though it was not as shared information early on as it should have been, which, again, I had problems with. So I'm just setting the stage here to kind of more, which areas to cross off for me, but I'm opening up to conversation for the other routes and how we might be able to proceed. And definitely, council, let's consider the alignments. And the design aspect is, you know, six months plus out before we're even having those discussions, it's gonna be the new council that has those discussions. So, tonight, alignment, how would you like to proceed? And we need some concrete answers in the next hour. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, first of all, not that this is gonna help any, but as I, well, first of all, this map on the screen is a cartoon, it's not a map. Yes. Shannon's gonna put up another map for me, and I'll talk to it. But the Green Route would be unacceptable because of the damage to the riparian area. But as I look a little closer here, the Blue Route, not that this is gonna bring us to consensus any better, but the Blue Route, from the viewpoint of the river, I think it crosses the river in essentially the same point as the Salmon Route. So it might be acceptable from that viewpoint. On the other hand, I see that where it would go, when it gets past south of the Rio, it looks like, I can see on my topo map here, that it would have to go up a great big hill, which seems impractical. So the Salmon Route, more to the south, across the Gibson property, seems more practical from that viewpoint. Okay, now what I'm gonna talk to, is you see three lines up there on this map, and don't confuse them with the colors we've talked about otherwise, but there's red, green, and yellow, and blue. Those are basically all the so-called Salmon Route. They're just showing more detail where they would be. And so at the very top of the screen, you can see it crosses the river. Now, there's, the way it's planned is that on the north side of the river, the road would go just east of a rock outcropping that would be very difficult. So, but all of these routes would be the same in that regard. But once you get past the river, going south, there's the, there's a route that starts blue and ends up yellow on this map, hugs the properties to the right. So I would suggest that we might want to move that line on what is on this map, shown as green, and that would be, that would get that road away from those properties just to the east of it. Now, when I first looked at this, I couldn't tell, but when I expanded this on my own computer, I can see that that route that on this map is green is actually to the east side of that drainage. I can't really see it on this map, but about, between the green and the blue is the drainage. So that green is actually up on the side of the hill a bit. There we go. Okay, all right. Now, you see where that dotted line is, which I don't know what that means, but right where that dotted, horizontal dotted line ends, there's a black line. I believe that is the drainage line. So what this is showing is that the route, that route that's green on this map, kind of on the side of the hill, to the west side of that drainage. And I would suggest that in that it gets the road farther away from those properties on the right. I don't think Mr. Gibson will be happy with that. He wants it to hug the right side of his property. So the rectangle that covers about two-thirds of that page with the dotted lines right through the middle, that's Mr. Gibson's property. So anyway, I'm suggesting that we consider just slightly up the side of the hill, because you don't want to build a road in the middle of a drainage, obviously, and what would be shown on this map is green. So this would be details of the Salmon Route, which I think would be a little bit better than the hug it against the property owners on the right side. So I'll throw that out for discussion. So this is basically the Salmon Route with a little tweaking.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. So you are in favor of the Salmon Route with the tweak to that specific area?
That's correct.
Thank you.
I'll also say that as I look at this, the Blue Route doesn't scare me as much as far as protecting the riparian area as I, now that I look at it in more detail, but from an engineering viewpoint, I think it'd be less practical, because there's, based on the topo here and what I saw when we did the hike out there, was that it would be very difficult to build a road up that hill. And then you'd have a problem similar to what we would have over on the original route, the north end of the original route. I'll yield.
You're Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for the discussion. Very helpful. So I guess before I personally start really weighing these three alternative routes to the Salmon Option, I just wanna state, you know, after hearing Councilmember Rasslin's comments and Councilmember McCarthy's about the lesser negative impacts of the Blue Option, I'll just state that where I'm at currently is that that Blue Option is my top priority.
Sorry, Councilmember Shimonie, I just wanna help clarify for the public, so you're saying the Blue Line from the original map, not the one that's currently pulled up?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I just wanna make sure we're looking at what you're talking about here. So please continue.
So, yeah, you know, I guess just, you know, I appreciate Councilmember McCarthy starting to go into additional details about the Salmon Option, but I just wanna make clear that, you know, before I personally start really weighing the different alternatives within the Salmon, if there is council majority to move forward with a Blue Option, to me, that makes most sense, and maybe we don't need to get into that level of detail about the Salmon Option until there's clarity that the Blue Option isn't our top priority. But obviously, I like to hear what other people on council have to say about that, but yeah, I'm definitely leaning towards the Blue Option. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I will just mention that the, as we've heard, if we're doing the Blue and Green Option, that will be contested by the certain property owners, meaning couple years delay and legal proceedings, and right at this time, that original alternate route, the Salmon Route, I don't like calling it the Salmon Route, like Plan B, can we do that? I don't know. That is the one that is not going to be facing a lot of the eminent domain issues, private property issues. And again, I'm not saying that that's what I wanna do 100%. I just wanna make sure everyone is realizing what the Blue and Green might entail from a legal perspective, from time delays, from costs associated, if we have to wait an additional two years before we can apply for federal grants or anything else. But I wanna kind of start with a little bit of a process of elimination, because primarily the timeline aspect that we have to deal with is regarding Canyon Del Rio and the infrastructure that they're already putting into that lot. So the question really is, to start off with, that I'm proposing to council, is the original alignment off the table? And we can discuss the next part, so we're not muddling things. Is there any council member who wants the original alignment? Or are we ready to move for an alternate, though we have not yet decided which alternate that might be? So I wanna hear from council, but let's start eliminating things, because again, we're needing to move this forward. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, two things. I support taking the original alignment off the table. And secondly, because of the color confusion, I have a suggestion. We will call those, the ones that are on the screen now, green, blue, salmon, and yellow, but of the salmon, we'll have Salmon West, Salmon Central, and Salmon East. Those would be the three on the other. So we won't call those by color, we'll call them by West, Center, and East. Salmon, three little minor changes.
Okay, sounds good.
Like that?
There we go. We're making progress here. Councilmember House, and then Vice Mayor.
I'm in agreement on taking the yellow off the table.
Vice Mayor.
I too am in agreement. Let's get that yellow off the table.
Councilmember Shimonie, I did see you in the chat, but please voice your opinion.
Yes, I'm fine with that, too.
All right, well then, that does give council majority, I'm also seeing it not from Councilmember Solis, that the Yellow Route is off the table.
And I made that, I made that very clear in my original comments as well, yellow is not an option.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Rasslin, for the clarification. Okay, so now, process of elimination, now we're looking at the options to the west. And again, we will need to make this decision. There are costs and benefits to every single option here. There are costs and benefits to every single option here, whether regarding riparian, engineering, that's going to be associated, the legal ramifications. So, Council, I want to hear your input. And again, we need concrete answers at this point as opposed to, you know, discussion of the cost benefits, because we know there's costs and benefits to every single option here. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, in the spirit of elimination, I would suggest that we take the green off the table and see if there's consensus on that. And then, then it would be down to blue and then the three sub options for salmon.
Thank you. I appreciate that suggestion. Happy to hear from other council members. Councilmember Solis is saying yes to that. House, Vice Mayor, we have majority to take the green route off the table. Now we're looking at the blue or the salmon route.
There's an S on that word. Salmon routes.
Salmon routes. Yes. Well, let's, that's certainly, I appreciate you bringing those up of those added modifications. I do think we need to move it away from the current property owners, especially those that are, this affects their view shed. There is just a couple that are affected by this view shed. Other properties that were built are farther away and won't be able to see the road. But in that section right there that you're speaking to, from my understanding from being there on the ground, as Art Babbitt had mentioned, being, you know, there's a big difference between being 50 feet away and 200 feet away. So if we are doing the salmon route, I would like to take Councilmember McCarthy's suggestion that we take a bit more westerly route, particularly what he had suggested on the more central. Salmon central. Man. In the future, let's, yeah, get, get a, get a legend here on these maps.
The problem is that this map, the map on the screen was prepared by staff. The map that I showed, and if anybody wants to, we can bring it back up, that was prepared by a private person and not city staff. That's why the, you know, colors weren't coordinated.
Yeah, certainly. That was no fault or anything by staff. But let's, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. But again, let's see where council stands, where the, with this. We're looking at the blue route, the salmon route, plus the additional specifications as Councilmember McCarthy has brought up. And if my computer would not go to sleep every five minutes, that would be great.
There, I'll start us off.
Yes, please do.
Thank you. So I, I think you know where I'm at, Council. I was just going to add a little bit more detail. I'm happy with the blue option as our top choice. And then, once the, the confluence of the different routes merge, I don't really care too much. I'll have a preference in terms of how it continues to that northeastern corner. But I do, I do think the blue route is the most direct and makes the most sense to me. If this were to make sense to do this, we could keep the salmon as a plan, a secondary plan, in case the blue route comes back to be too expensive or gets caught up in litigation, whatever it might be. But I guess I like to see us put that one first, but keep the salmon as a backup perhaps. Thank you.
Thank you. We do need clear direction, though, on the alignment, not a Plan A, Plan B, right, at this point. I mean, we need to really get into the design phase and so forth at this point.
Okay, so I'm with the blue.
So your preference is the blue line, and, sounds good. I hear, yeah. So, other council members? Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are reminded today that we are here because of council's direction back in October because of the opposition of residents to the yellow line, which we have eliminated today. So for six months, staff worked with the, the property owners, and the property owners even invested their own private dollars with the studies in coming up with the alternative route, which we call the salmon route. Note that the salmon route is bringing in partnership and collaboration from all the property owners, Canyon Del Rio, Little America, Symmetry, Gibson, and Juniper Point. I am compassionate and very mindful of the impacts to residents, whether the yellow line or the salmon line. And I get it. And some folks call it bananas. Where there's a sentiment, bananas mean build absolutely nothing near anyone. But I don't want to go bananas. I want to come up with a pragmatic decision. And I have to remind my colleagues that we were not elected to be comfortable. We were not elected to please everyone. We're, we are elected to come up with a collective decision that is pragmatic and will serve the entire population of Flagstaff. And also being cognizant of all our duties and obligations as, as mandated by voters by virtue of Prop 419, which actually funds the project by only 40%. We still have to find the remaining 60%. And I am actively involved in bringing in state and federal dollars to our transportation project with my role on Metro Plan Board and as Vice Chair of the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council. So with that, I would like to move forward with the pragmatic decision of choosing the salmon alternative line. And I am open to discussing the details of the salmon line as proposed by Councilmember McCarthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Councilmember House?
Thank you. I'll be, again, attempt to be brief. I'm going to support that as well in pursuing the salmon line. I do want to have some clarification, if possible, and I don't know if staff can speak to this at all at this point. But my understanding in looking at this, and I went back earlier today and re-watched the meeting from October 5th of last year and the, the public comment meeting with the small parcel owners. And from my understanding, the green and blue lines were not alternative routes. They were bookends to the distance that route could move according to what the city staff was looking at. They were not agreed-to routes by those landowners in those areas. And I think that's part of what's important to, to keep in mind is I'm not sure that those are entirely on the table for us to be looking at as alternatives. And if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm open to being corrected on that. But short version is I am amenable to looking at the salmon route as the alternative alignment with tweaks that can be made as it goes into the design phase.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So earlier, we went around and I did talk about some of the design aspects. And I think that's important, because that may not be what we're voting on today, but I want the community to know I'm listening and I'm hearing the concerns. And the only way I can convey that, Mayor, is if I talk about those concerns and the design. I too will be supporting the salmon route. That was my initial thought from the get-go. I did my due diligence. I went out three times. I have talked to a lot of you. And that is still, when I look at it and when I'm out there, that is what I see is as our best route. Again, thank you, everyone. I don't take this decision lightly. And I am too in favor of looking at tweaks that Councilmember McCarthy has presented with the salmon line. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you very much. Clearly, council has provided direction here. I want to just put my weight behind the blue alternative. And I wish we could have had those conversations with the developers to see if there was anything we can do there. Notwithstanding, I do want to have the ability to weigh in on this orange line. I do think it should be westerly or central and not totally to the east. That's a High Country Foster kitten there. She hasn't learned her manners when it comes to council meetings. So, yeah, you know, I, I hope we're wrapping this meeting up. It seems like there's a clear direction here for how to proceed. I, I just want to end my comments by saying thank you to the residents for engaging. Thank you for feeling empowered to talk with us. I hope that you feel that your voices have been respected and heard. This was a thorny decision that had to be come to with various parties and conflicting interests in play. And I would have preferred not to do this at all. I think that this orange line is going to be a good solution for the community. I would have liked to see us try to negotiate the, the blue line a little bit more with whatever time we have. I don't think that the blue line would affect the deadlines that we were discussing 10 days ago as much. And having been out there with, with some of those folks from Little America and with Kelly Gibson and Symmetry, they're, they're great guys. I think we could have sat down and maybe discussed this a little further. But the council has spoken, and I believe that's where we stand. And I wish you all a very happy July and look forward to getting back into all these conversations when we come back from recess in early August.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Shumoni?
Yeah, as we do begin to start wrapping up the conversation, which it sounds like there is council direction for the salmon option, I do wonder, Council and Mayor and staff, if it is possible to have that salmon alternative maybe wiggle a little bit more to get from A to B rather than, you know, kind of looping around with the yellow. For example, could it, could it come north up the Gibson property, on the west side of the Gibson property, and then between Little America and Gibson, and then continue northbound as planned, just to kind of cut a couple more corners? Mayor, I'm not too sure if that adds too much complication, that it doesn't give direction. But I guess I'm just looking to shorten the length as much as possible, but also...
The problem is that topography, the topography is very difficult when it comes to that.
Never mind then. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. Councilmember McCarthy?
Yeah. This map on the screen doesn't show it at all, but the map that I have has topographical lines. So you can see where the hills are. You can see where the valleys are. And from a, the, the salmon route looks, from an engineering viewpoint, looks to be substantially more practical than the blue route. Not that that's going to affect anything, but it's hard to see it on the S. But when I have, you know, I have a paper copy, because it kind of goes up the drainage, where the blue one, like, goes across and then goes up, and then goes down. And it's more difficult. I mean, I'll let our engineering friends comment to that.
Councilmember McCarthy, I can bring up Danny from Peak Engineering to talk a little bit about the topography. They've done some design, initial design work in this area.
That'd be interesting.
Mayor, Council. Danny Washburn, Peak Engineering. Yeah, Jim, you're right. The, we looked at that preliminary blue line just to see if the profile would work. And there is substantial topography, and there's expense with that. As mentioned, we didn't do a detailed cost analysis of that. But, you know, we followed ridge lines. You can kind of see it here where, you know, peaks and valleys tend to be where roads want to be. But you want to be cognizant of what's going to be developable as well. So with that main Rio crossing and the great difference, there, there would be substantial grade. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. And I will note, too, well, not to switch back and forth between maps too much, but just north of the Rio de Flag is where the difference between the, the blue line and the salmon line, right north of the Rio de Flag, is the same line. So I just want you to note that pulling it north of the Gibson property as opposed to the normal salmon line, with topography concerns, it's also not going to make as much of a difference to, really, it'll be the same for half of the residents on that western strip. So just, just wanted to point that out. But we do have council direction on this at this point. And we'll note that not only did council decide on that more salmon line, that we did hear from a majority saying that a more westerly route on any modifications south of the Rio de Flag would be beneficial. Again, the blue and salmon right there, it's the same. South of the Rio de Flag, I mean, we have to, with that alignment, we have to cross right there. It's just south of that Rio de Flag, if we're able to move more westerly, to not disaffect the more southwestern, small property owners, the better. So, Councilmember McCarthy?
So that might be enough detail for tonight. I mean, we can leave this up to the engineers to actually locate it. The, the one I was suggesting is the middle one on the other map. And I'll note that that's just to the west side of the drainage. And, you know, without going way up the side of the hill, but up enough so that you're not in the middle of the drainage.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. The main part tonight was really the alternate or the original route, so that way the infrastructure in Canyon Del Rio can be properly done. And tonight, we definitely made that decision, and we'll have more designs and so forth before us in the, in the future. Councilmember McCarthy?
One very quick comment. I do think that we should get enough right-of-way to make a four-lane plus turn lane. But for now, only do two lanes plus turn lane.
Yes. And I think I've heard quite a few of, I'm...
I just want to say I'm on board with that, too.
Yeah. Mr. Peterson?
Councilmember McCarthy, when you say for now, just do the two-lane, you mean for construction purposes, not for acquisition purposes? Correct.
For acquisition, five lanes. For construction, three lanes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, I should plug this in so it doesn't actually go off all the time. Shumoni or Aslan, if you have any further comments, please feel free to just jump in. I'm sorry, I'm, let's keep shutting down on me.
I'll just say really quick, you know, since Mr. McCarthy just stated his preference in that acquisition, I'll just be clear and say that I'm for three lanes, the acquisition of the right-of-way for three lanes and capping it there. But respect that I might be not in the majority, but I think it is close. I think I heard one, at least one, if not two others, say that they too would like to see it capped at three. I think Councilmember Aslan was one of them, but still might be in the minority. But regardless, just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni.
I can confirm that. I can confirm that.
What was that, Councilmember Aslan?
Just confirming that Councilmember Shimonie is correct in his assessment there.
Okay, thank you. While we will get into that, I think the decision we are needing tonight on the larger alignment has been decided. So unless staff needs anything more from us?
Thank you so much for everyone's comments, large and small, and for the council and staff and the whole team's support. So thank yous all around.
Thank you. With that, meeting adjourned.